February 4th, 2022, approximately 7:00 P.M. At this time, would you please stand and cite the flag of the United States of America? And as we have heard about like for which sentence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Would you remain standing for a moment of prayer? Amen. At this time, we'll have roll call. Mr. Lashinsky.
President.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
This is Anis.
Yes.
This is Moyer.
Yes.
And Mayor Ulrich, here. All President accounted for. Thank you. At this time, we would like to do an acknowledgement of achievement for some people. The first one we would like to is any representative from the Searls family, if you would mind coming up here, please. If you would come around here.
Sorry, I don't like that.
Okay, that's okay. Is this you signing here?
No, I asked them to write this.
On behalf of the city, we would like to present Mrs. Frida Searls and her family, her son is here with us. They have been gracious. And many of us recall going up by their homes at Christmas and seeing the beautiful decorations. Well, Mrs. Searls and her family have decided to donate a lot of those beautiful, beautiful decorations to the city. And that we would display them at Market Street. So next year, at Christmas, our part along Market should really look beautiful. So we wanted to award them a certificate of appreciation and award it to the Searls family and Mrs. Frida Searls. It's by the Schmokene Mayor Council on recognition and appreciation for their donation of Christmas decorations during the Christmas season in the year 2021. And they will be displayed proudly next year. Thank you. This time.
Thank you so much.
City's Controller. City's Taxi. At this time, we would like Chief Lester Yeo, and if he has any family here to come up here, please. Along with Officer Huffman and his family.
On December 16th, 2021, at approximately 20:04 hours, Corporal Pramranth and Officer Huffman, along with the Schmokene Fire Bureau, were dispatched to 24 South Fifth Street in the city of Schmokene for a report of carbon monoxide incident with illness. At 20:06 hours, Officer Huffman arrived on scene and encountered a female on the front porch of the home. The female appeared confused, disoriented, and in distress. Officer Huffman interviewed the female and was able to learn that two people were unconscious inside the home. Officer Huffman, without the protection of breathing apparatus, entered the home and began to search for the other persons. Officer Huffman located a male approximately 10 feet inside the door. The male was on the floor, unconscious, and not responding. Officer Huffman dragged the male from the home onto the front porch. Officer Huffman re-entered the home and searched for the second person. He had located the second male on the first floor beyond where the first male was located. The male was laying face down and unresponsive. He began to drag the second male out of the home when he was assisted by Deputy Chief Lester Yeo of the Schmokene Fire Bureau. The male was successfully removed from the home onto the front porch. While removing the persons from the home, Officer Huffman observed a dog in a cage, and the dog was vomiting. Officer Huffman, along with Chief Yeo, noted that the CO levels were extremely high at that time. Upon speaking with Schmokene Fire Bureau's Chief of the Department, Chief Javerees, he advised that the CO levels were over 1,000 parts per million. CO level, as CO levels increase and remain between 50 and 70 parts per million, symptoms can include headache, fatigue, and nausea. At sustained CO concentrations above 150 and 200 parts per million, disorientation, unconsciousness, and death are possible. Sustained concentrations above 300 parts per million, death is imminent. These men of our department always give 110% in their job performance and on a daily basis go above and beyond. But there are times when officers excel and should be recognized for their efforts. We feel that Officer Huffman and Chief Yeo, on this day, excelled on this day and showed the true meaning to protect and serve, and for that, are hereby awarded the Department Life Saving with Valor Award. This award is presented to officers whether on or off duty, with total disregard for their personal safety, save and/or attempt to save the life of another under extreme hazardous conditions to life. This award is signified by a citation bar worn on the officer's uniform above his nameplate, as well as a letter of condemnation. The city of Schmokene hereby recognizes Deputy Chief Lester Yeo, City Schmokene Fire Bureau, and awards him the Life Saving Award with Valor for his actions on December 16th, 2021, while assisting at a carbon monoxide incident in which two citizens' lives were saved because of his heroic actions.
It gives me great honor to present this to you, Officer Huffman. On behalf of the city of Schmokene, we hereby recognize Officer Gregory Huffman, City of Schmokene Police Department, and award him the Life Saving Award with Valor for his actions on 16 December, 2021, while assisting at a carbon monoxide incident in which two citizens' lives were saved because of his heroic actions. Congratulations. I just want to say one thing. You heard Councilman Rotten read about the carbon monoxide. As many of you know, I did serve as coroner. And the scary part about that is it's silent, it's odorless, tasteless, and it can overcome you in an instant. And seeing what these gentlemen did is a test to the greatness of our people in Schmokene. So I want to thank you both again. If your family requires any photos, feel free to take a meet.
Thank you so much.
Nice work, Chief. I didn't think it would get that nice of them to give a wet smell, or is that a fire or something?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started with the meeting. You're welcome to stay. Okay, and at this time, we'll pick up on the agenda under Presentations, which Mayor, there's nothing to mention. But it's not this to report. The correspondence, I have no correspondence at this time either. Or that'll take us into Citizen Comments.
From the agenda.
Okay, then upon business listed on the agenda.
Jesse Stormbrook was relevant.
This is Storm for you for seeing, I assume that you signed in on that paper.
I did.
Behind you.
I did.
Thank you, sir.
The section of the meeting that I'd like to speak about real quick is for the solicitor's report for the first reading of the Schmokene Trailers and Commercial Recreational Vehicle Parking Ordinance. Ordinance like this had come up a couple of months ago, and they were looking to, the prior council was looking to pass this. And I spoke with our Chief of Police about it briefly in passing in regards to businesses who have trailers that are on the road doing job sites, track, you've got people who do trash outs, you've got people who do a lot of things with trailers in Schmokene. And sometimes they get left on a job site from day to day for a couple of days while a job's going on. And my concern with the current legislation, and I don't know if it's been revised because we haven't had the reading, first reading of the new ordinance, unless it's the exact same. But I would, I would hope that council would write in in regards to trailers being used on city streets for multiple days for business purposes, that there is a waiver put in for those. Because I know, but I spoke with the chief briefly about it, and he said, well, we're going to have to hold that in consideration and take into consideration what's transpiring on that. And I think if we're going to pass legislation, we want it to be clear and concise and enforceable for everyone equally across the legislation. So I would urge that council put in some language for businesses who are doing a trash out that may take two or three days, and there's a trailer parked out on the street for that. Or a company who's doing pressure washing, or a company who's doing anything where they have a trailer with tools and equipment and parking a job site on the street for a day or two or three. You know, a time limit, I believe a time limit is warranted on it. But for businesses using trailers and parking trailers on city street while a job site's going on, I think we need to make some kind of legislation in the ordinance to protect that. So it's not a question for the police, and we don't have people arguing back and forth after the legislation's passed. Thank you.
Any other citizen?
Thank you, Mr. Storm. All right, next, under minutes. Like a motion to accept the minutes of the City of Schmokene's following council meetings dated on December 13th, 2021, December 31st, 2021, January 3rd, 2022, January 10th, 2022, and January 31st of 2022.
Mr. Echo, it's okay to do all five of them on one vote.
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir. Roll call. Mr. Lashinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rowland.
Yes.
Mrs. Anis.
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer.
Yes.
And Mayor Ulrich.
Yes.
The motion carries approving all five as you address. Under bills, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills from January 2022 as listed on the bill list.
Second.
Other question? Mr. Lashinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rowland.
Yes.
Mrs. Anis.
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer.
Yes.
And Mayor Ulrich.
Yes.
The motion carries the Anis. Director's report for council finance.
There are treasures report for the month of January 2022. General fund balance, $429,241.59. Liquid fuels balance, $281,906.51. Total library fund balance, $33,354.89. Total capital projects balance, $120,543.54. Total sinking fund number one debt service balance, $146,810.45. Total sinking fund number two recreation balance, $27,902.22. Total street lighting balance, $1,951.37. For total balance in all accounts, $888,710.57. Submitted by our treasurer, Brenda Scandell.
Anything else?
I do not have any.
Thank you. Parks and public buildings?
No, yes, I have something for a moment.
Yes.
I'm gonna stand up for this. Think I can get through it. Uh, I'll just take a moment here. I did jot some things down. I'm used to talking off the top of my head, it's second nature to me as most of you in this room know. But I did wanna take a moment and say thank you so much to Mayor Olwick, Mr. Slavy, members of council, Attorney Greco, staff members, uh, and everyone who extended so much kindness and care to me during Jeff's illness. It mattered to me more than you know, and I certainly think that Jeff, on some level, really understood that. My heart is breaking right now, as I know you know. But I know that I care very much for the people of Shmoken. This isn't a political act, by the way. I certainly continue, plan to continue to work hard for my friends and my fellow citizens, and I know Jeff would really want me to do that. So thank you to everyone, I appreciate it so much. Now, the under dues. Uh, I just wanted to add that I have been in talks with Dave Scott on the upcoming music and park concert series. Uh, we have a couple of different ideas, and Dave is very excited to get back to, you know, planning something that we feel will be very, very positive, and has been positive. We need to iron some things out with council, you know, as far as our contribution and, you know, perhaps a tweaking of the number of concerts that we will provide, but, you know, that will come. Um, but he's very excited, um, and, and so am I, you know, of course. Uh, Mayor Olwick and I, and we'll meet in the future with our Shmoken City Garden Club. I've always been a real fan of the Garden Club, I haven't been able to get too involved up to this point. But someone, a member reached out to me and asked if Mayor Olwick and I would attend the meeting. And I enthusiastically said yes, because they do a lot of great work around the city. And it comes slowly, you know, you don't exactly see all of the efforts uh, right away, but I'm very thrilled to, you know, be involved in that. And also, Illumination Station, I'm sorry, I didn't get to the meeting.
Oh, that's all right.
But I'm hoping that you and I can have a conversation about that.
Absolutely.
How good that the meeting and, you know, what we can expect with time limits and so forth.
Absolutely.
Uh, Larry Strasser and I are always in constant contact now that I'm in this position. So, you know, I will have many more conversations with him as we gear up for the spring season and the summer season, which I know we're all really ready for. So that's really all I have right now, Mayor and council. Is there anybody who has anything?
Thank you very much. Republic Improvements.
All right, Mayor. Nothing major, um, just wanna remind us some people, when we have the snowfalls in the areas, um, please keep your sidewalks as best you can, keep them clean. Uh, also, when it comes to the downtown area and around the area of anyone who lives where there's parking meters, if we could try to keep the snow away from the parking meters so people can either, and I've seen some, I'm a social media guy, and I've seen some of it back and forth online with certain like downtown or Shmoken Street and things like that. We try to keep it away, if there's something that needs to be worked out with the street department to pick up excess snow on a, on a day like that, uh, where it can be moved right away. That would be appreciated. I ask that when you are removing snow, that nobody throws it on the street when it's after the streets have been plowed. I know like sometimes it's, it's tough to figure out where you're gonna put snow, even if you've had a substantial amount. Uh, but if you put it back in the street, you're just, you're repeating the same process, that you're getting plowed back in, or other people are getting plowed back in, and it just makes a mess on top of what we're already trying to clean up.
Do you think that is... Like I said, anything? I think so. I guess that's absolutely. All right, Public Safety.
Uh, start with uh, fire calls. Fire alarms, nine. Rescue or emergency service calls, seven. Fire, six, service call, six, hazardous conditions. Five, good intent calls, four, standby for weather, one. Total calls for January were thirty-eight, total personnel seventy-nine, total man hours one hundred and thirty-six. Code office report, uh, total revenues collected twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Complaints addressed ninety-two, code tickets issued eleven. Notice of violations sent six, citations written twenty, landwear inspections complete, seven. Of those ninety-two complaints addressed, eighty-seven are closed, fighters still open. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Before we get to Chief Fraven, Greco?
Yes, sir. Actually, I do have a lot of them. And we see more, I touched it a little bit with Illumination Station. The two buildings that we are demoing down there have kinda become a nightmare. Because at some point in time, people that own the building on the far left anchored their building to the wall of the building we're demoing. Uh, Mr. Canople believes he can get it down with, you know, obviously not with a hundred percent certainty, but he feels pretty good about being able to get it down, leaving that wall remain and not affecting the other property. I believe Linda texted me today that she had gotten in contact, in contact with the Borellis, and they're gonna speak again, or she's gonna be speaking to uh, Mr. Canople. But it seems like we should be on track to have it down by um, mid-March. Somewhere in that timeframe, so Illumination Station should still be, not, not initially getting it completed by the end of the year.
Thank you. Chief Fraven.
Uh, juvenile petitions for the month of January, five. Criminal arrest, twenty-two. Non-traffic citations, ten. Traffic citations, thirty-six. Traffic warnings, four. Parking tickets, ten. Parking citations, twenty-five. Code tickets, twelve. And the department handled six hundred and sixty-seven calls for the month of January.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, well, hello Mayor and council. Citizens. To continue on what Councilman Rowan said, Illumination Station will be completed by the end of the year. And this little hiccup, um, we've had a couple of pickups with that project. Actually, it's probably not a bad thing. We were very concerned early on what the condition of the Borelli building was in, since it is vacant. And um, so we were a bit concerned, if we build this beautiful park, what happens if the building to the left of it falls down? Or gets disrepaired? So the fact that, um, what Mr. Canople is going to do is actually create an exterior wall to 124 as he's taking down 122. So we're pretty much, pretty much guaranteed that that building is in good shape when we build our park, which is, as I said, can't say it's a good thing, but um, for the Borellis, it's not costing them anything to get an exterior wall put into their building. And if we didn't do this, if we didn't do the project, I can guarantee you 122 and 118 East Independent Street are coming down regardless, regardless. So at that point, 124 will also come down. It's secure, they're, they're connected. So this is the best chance, and Mr. Canople said he had about a good eighty percent feeling that he can save it, which is good enough, that's, that's good enough for me, I guess. I'd like a hundred, but whatever. Um, so that project will be completed by the end of this year, calendar year. Um, and we did have a public uh, meeting last week, and the plans are just gorgeous, and I will get you the plans then too, so you can see what it looks like. It's, it's fantastic, truly. The other things that are going on are, um, we do have a LURDA in the City of Shmoken. So if you're looking to make an investment in the city, with a minimum investment of fifty thousand dollars or more residential or commercial property, that's improvements upon the property itself. Stop in at City Hall when you get your building permit, also ask for a LURDA application, so... And we actually have really nice uh, investor packets, so you can pick up a packet while you're there. The H&amp;H study, which is your hydraulic, hydraulic and hydrologic, boy, that, that trips me up every single time, which is your study of water. We are fighting FEMA on behalf of the City of Shmoken because what happened is they remapped the, the City of Shmoken when they did the entire Susquehanna Valley. We weren't targeted here, but when we, they remapped it, they quadrupled your flood map. Uh, so we had, because of your Act 47 statutes, we were able to get funding to be able to fight, to bring engineers in. And they are almost done, we should actually have our final uh, findings by the end of, by next month, Act of March. And so far, we have found serious, serious discrepancies between what FEMA thought and what is probably more actual uh, reality. So what happens after we get all of our findings, then we take that to FEMA, and we can fight on behalf of the city. And when we ask the engineer, it's GPI is the engineer, when we asked him, how receptive should FEMA be? He said they're actually usually pretty receptive because FEMA does not have the manpower to go into all these different communities the way we have done. We've been very thorough with fighting this for you. So that should be done by the, by next month, by March. Right now, also, we're kicking off the comprehensive plan, so that should be happening starting this month. The Brownfield Grant will be starting this month. Uh, let me see if there's anything else that we've got. I have these uh, updates, so you're welcome to them if anybody wants. Those are probably the most important things that are happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under new bills. Request a motion to approve the grievance submitted by the Southern County Council of the Arts for 2022. Mayor? Correct. They were discussed during Children's Day and so forth. I believe, correct, Sarah?
The...
I don't have the apps right here with me.
The Downtown Christmas Market at Claude Kaler, the first Saturday of December. The uh, food truck frenzy the last Saturday of October, and Heritage Festival of the Arts, the uh, Saturday of Memorial Day weekend.
It's a duplication by 2021, and it was discussed at the workshop meeting uh, last week.
Second.
Any questions? Who's seconded? Scott? Who's it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's okay. Okay, the next one on the agenda is a request, a motion to approve the reappointment of Brenda Scandell as a tax collector for the City of Shmoken in the year 2022. I've discussed this with Mr. Greco, our solicitor, and at the request of Mrs. Scandell, we just need to tweak the wording here a little bit. She needs to be released based on her report that has been submitted to the Emerald County from the 2021 taxes. Am I correct on that, Mrs. Scandell?
That's correct.
Okay.
The county is still in the city, have already seen my hearing recues.
Okay. And uh, so therefore, we can move ahead, Mr. Greco, with the appointment for 2020 year tax.
Yes.
Actually.
Twenty-twenty-two.
I'm sorry, twenty, what did I say, twenty-twenty? Okay, who made the motion?
No.
No one?
No.
No vote.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olwick?
Yes.
Motion carries, unanimous.
Congrats on your job.
Request the motion ratifying the city administrator's authorization granting the city treasurer to open up two additional new checking accounts to cover grant monies from H&amp;H and the zoning book rewrite at M&amp;T Bank. No vote.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olwick?
Yes.
Motion carries, unanimous. Okay, sir, we have any unfinished business? No, sir. Any reports from boards and committees? No, sir. This time, we will entertain the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated earlier, uh, the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 22-01, would be the City of Shmoken Trailer Commercial and Recreation Vehicle Parking Ordinance. It would be cited as the City of Shmoken Trailer Commercial and Recreation Vehicle Parking Ordinance. The purpose is set out in the ordinance, the city council of the City of Shmoken finds it necessary and desirable to regulate the parking of trailers, commercial vehicles, and recreational vehicles within the city in order to, to promote the comfort, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of and visitors to the city by protecting them from exposure to nuisances, including but not limited to hazardous or harmful obstacles to parking, driving, or pedestrian traffic in such hazardous or harmful conditions, which may attract children and others to them in the result of physical injury or other harm. And further, to prevent the blighting of neighborhoods and the degradation of the environment, and to minimize the psychological ill effects of the presence of such vehicles and debris upon joint residents and property owners. Uh, this ordinance will be on file throughout the year.
I will copy it and place it on the cabinet or filing or on the counter at the front door tomorrow morning or evening before I leave here to sit.
Now, although this was previously read as, as noted, this would be considered the first reading of, of this ordinance.
That's correct, sir.
And this is a new ordinance, so it does not have to be read, and it's entered.
Mayor, any questions? This, this is probably for the solicitor and for the chief. With this ordinance, if I own a triathlon, I'm a triathlon driver, and I am registered and inspected to be on the roads in the state of Pennsylvania, how is that enforcement gonna work if I park that by my house? Can we enforce it?
We can enforce it by ordinance. Under vehicle code, though, it's legally inspected and registered. Under, the, the enforcement would come through the ordinance that's adopted by the city. So what it would fall under is, basically is the same way if it's a parking issue. It falls under ordinance.
Which is how our neighbors in full township handle it, what you're just saying?
Yeah.
And how I do believe in the community where you serve, the township.
Yeah, it, it's, it's through ordinance. Vehicle code Y is there to be no enforcement, because we can enforce it. But under ordinance, which is protected by the city, that would be law enforcement's portion of it to enforce it. That's what I was...
Thank you. Did Joe have his hand up? Did you have your hand up?
Would this also work, same thing if someone had a, like a motorhome? And parked it on, if it was registered?
Yep.
Motor vehicle.
And then what would, to address what Jesse's concerned with that, would that fall under this, or how would that work?
My whole thing would be, I think that should be like on a waiver basis. For instance, if, and the only one I can use for example is we turned down a fire building. It's an emergency necessity, get the building torn down. They call, we have to leave our trailer in front. That's gonna have to be... That's gonna have to be something to come back probably through city council or through coenforcement.
With like a.
To basically give a waiver and say, okay, you have forty-eight hours, you're permitted forty-eight hours for the emergency removal of product or whatever. Again, for us, we can enforce it under ordinance, but for that, you're talking more or less to get a waiver.
Well, I here in City Hall have given permission in situations where you're talking about using common sense.
We just did it two weeks ago.
You guys tearing down the property, and you know if you tear it down this way, how can you be sort of ridiculous and say you're gonna tear it down over on that side when you can't get near? So choosing common sense.
And I know, I know two weeks ago, we had a situation that was addressed that way, and there was no problem with it.
I think the indicator could be, obviously, if they got a demolition permit or they got a building permit, it'll do work.
Have it laid out right?
Kind of is a given.
I, I, you're correct, you're saying this.
And the reason we have to take into consideration is look at some of our streets.
Right.
There's just nothing we can do. But again, as Mr. Slavy said, it's gonna come down to just the common sense part of it.
Are we okay now? Yeah. At this time, will entertain any citizen comments?
Yeah, this is my first time.
Okay, so, I'll answer.
This is my first time.
So we don't need to vote to accept that, first reading that, what?
It's just the first reading.
Oh, so you don't, okay.
That's, that's reading. You guys already voted to approve.
We're doing it wrong for. Yeah, because.
Just made the first reading.
No, there's no reason to do that.
That's okay. This is ours. I usually like to call everyone on the phone and harass them. State my name, Kelly Palowski. Vine Street, Schmoken.
Madam?
So. I did sign it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, you're okay.
First, happy anniversary, Joey and Tanya.
Thank you.
Second, I just want to recognize the streets department for the fabulous job that they have done with removal. These guys ensure our safety, put themselves on the line, they do a fabulous job. Bunker Hill has been spot on. So those guys are doing fabulous. Moving on to the next. Here we go again, this bed bug roach problem. Next to me, thank you, Mr. Slavy, you've been a guide and light to me through this whole thing. Do we have any solution for this condemned house on Vine Street that sits two doors next to me? As Mr. Rowland also helped me very well. They're infested with roaches and bed bugs, and they're forcing all of us to get exterminated, which is costly for many of us. And the homeowner next to the abandoned house has a garbage business of his own, but does not take his own garbage out. Do we know if any citations or anything has been issued to the landlord, the homeowner?
Mayor, if I can just tell you this, I have had a discussion with Mr. Rowland late this afternoon in regards to your problems up there.
Yes.
And he and I have a, an idea as to how we want to deal with that. However, there's so many other players that we need to have involved in making some progress there aren't here in this room with us, the city. But he will, he and I planned on talking, and you may, we may have to have you come in since you are a complainant in that neighborhood and so forth, so.
And I believe I can have some of the other neighbors along with us. I do have receipts and everything.
We have to determine what the complaint is, what's heard.
Hold on, I have a sign language. The last time we had the bug issue.
Sure.
And I adore it a lot. We got that one taken care of. So now it's back again.
It's the two homes, yes. There's the vacant home, which.
Is the one next door to Chrissy?
Yes. And then the one attached.
Problems coming from.
Both.
But essentially, the second one now. I'll get, I'll talk with Dave and find out where he's at with it.
Yeah, I would just appreciate, only because it's becoming very costly for many of us and, you know.
Yeah, I'll get with Dave and see where he's.
It's petty.
That's your worst infection.
Yes, and.
It is winter, it's true, and cold, the warmth will come back and that.
Absolutely, and that's my, that's my fear. But I appreciate and, and thank you for taking my problem serious and.
We gotta give other books, as far as, even though like, I know we have a lot with rentals. I think they have, but as far as property owners with upkeep like this in their homes and quality of life, or do we have anything that this could basically, could fall back on? Like even because, of course, not only just the problem here, but throughout many areas.
The city does have a quality of life ordinance. I think.
Yeah, but I don't know specifically, I don't know what that specifically.
I know, and we really, before we are quoted of saying some things, I think let me and Mr. Rowland take a word.
At what point does it become like a health and safety hazard? Is it?
It may actually be to the point that he can turn it over to Officer Permarano and go for a call.
Yeah, that would, that would be, I mean, I've gone to them several times on several occasions. I've tried to be a decent person, but I'm far beyond that right now. Thank you for your time.
Kelly, what's that, what's that address of that house?
Well, mine's nine. Nine, eleven, and nine oh nine. One is occupied, the other is vacant. I'm tired of that over there. I believe under an alien house.
Say hello, Sue.
The daughter.
Which is where you.
Yeah, there's somebody looking there. I hope that at some point that they could go in and assess that house before they rent it again. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
In regards to what I stated earlier on the new business side versus what you guys have discussed here tonight, this is a picture of a trailer for a gentleman who his livelihood is picking up trash at local residence. And if you look in, this is Cold Township's idea of how to stop trailers from being on the street. They booted the trailer. So his business, his job, his livelihood shut down. That's why I'm asking for, let's get something in writing if it's a business use vehicle and it's there parked for a day or overnight, you know, that we need to have something. Because, right, so that's, that's the boot on the guy's trailer, preventing him from using it for business. But right next to it is a little travel trailer for your lawn mowers parked in half on the side, half on the street, half in the grass, and nothing done with that for the neighbor. So we gotta have, if Schmoken's gonna enforce something, I'm asking that we put it in there and get it all laid out from the beginning so there's no question in the future on the trailer aspect of things. Because if a business, if I take an enclosed trailer in and park it with, you know, fifty sheets of drywall and a furnace in it and everything else, we can't possibly get it all into the house because it's gonna be in your way to try and do any of the other work. So it's a job trailers, it's work to remodel houses. That's what my fear is for my business. I've had other people approach me that are in Cold Township that have had issues with getting their trailer rebooted and things like that because of the legislation there. So I would say let's reconsider something there. On the second note is an issue that was brought up to my attention this week in regards to marking homes uninhabitable, but then padlocking the home and marking it and then putting a sign up that states that nobody can enter the home. My concern is, is we've never taken possession of that home. Marking a house unfit for habitability means that they can't live in it. But it should not, by statute of Pennsylvania law, prevent the owner from going in and cleaning out the debris from the home, doing the repairs that are needed to bring it out of habitability. By us padlocking that home, we've taken possession of that home. And it was never condemned, but condemnation was never done. The city's never taken possession. With that same topic, my concern is, the particular house that I'm referring to was owner occupied, and the owners of the home were thrown out the same day that children and youth had had contractors out to measure and inspect to put a new furnace into the people's homes. So no furnace in the home versus sleeping in their cars. One of their children was unwelcome at a family member's house that they had stayed at for a while. He broke back into the house after his parents had locked it up and stayed there.
Wait, three minutes, Ben? Yes?
Yeah, can I request a few extra minutes here to finish?
Any other citizens that have comments? At this time, will, if there's no any further business, will adjourn the meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.